More. All stream and it will say go to live on YouTube and then it brings up this page.
I come from video.
Yep, video.
And I create more. What's left?
New video.
Is there anybody here for the cell tower? Okay, I'm like, okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, this one was just. It has fifty-one sheets. Okay, is that what you have?
Yeah. Oh, yes and no. I, yeah, but I had the most. Recording clerk. That's what.
Yeah, that's not a real name of what's in the bylaws.
Um, I did, he wasn't sure if he was still. What's just us? So it's, it's seven o'clock. This is the planning commission meeting for Columbia Township, Bamburang County. Um, if we would like to start with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance, you know the flag. Save America. Well, um, David Marsalotti here.
Frank Rubicich.
Frank. And Jennifer.
Here.
I don't know your last name.
Spears.
Spears, okay, new people, okay. Um, first order of business is we have to select new officers. So I'm gonna open it up for nomination for chairperson.
And nominate Dave, Kelly.
Um, the joint for second.
Second. Sorry.
Yes, they are, yeah.
Thank you. Oh my God, I can't even hear, I'm sorry. Who did you nominate, Frank? I'm sorry.
Hey.
I am, at this time, I'm the vice chair. So we'll take a roll call vote, all in favor of David Marsalotti being the chairman.
Well, one second at the vote. Oh, sorry. Gotcha.
Okay.
All over.
Okay. Frank. David, yes.
Yes.
Very serious.
Are you allowed to vote for yourself? Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. He didn't make the motion. Yes.
Okay. So, so there's three of us, there's gonna be three positions, so. Frank, I'm nominated to as vice chair.
I have a second.
And Jennifer will second it. And we'll do a roll call vote. I think you can vote for yourself. Right, right, and I vote yes.
Yes.
So Frank is vice chair. And I would like to nominate Jennifer as the secretary. And if you would like to second, oh, second is second. Um, all in favor of Frank? Yes?
Yes.
And me too, yeah.
They broke down.
Good job.
Um, so next we approve the agenda. And I know I've looked at this. And Jennifer's not in the office here, and even Frank's not in there.
We need to add resignation.
Um.
Or. Uh, G for communications received.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. We'll just wait for that.
Yeah, that's where that, that's where that goes.
Well. So I move, we approve the agenda as it is.
I second it.
Frank seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay. So this is the agenda. Um, I have not looked at the previous minutes.
Uh, they're, they're not available.
They're not available, okay. So we're gonna move on past that. So we get to the fun part, the public comments. So this was initially going to be a public hearing for the battery energy storage system. But all of the people were not notified in the surrounding area. So this is not an official public hearing. But I would sure like to hear your, your views on this. So this can be on any public comments you want, not necessarily the, the battery storage. So.
I could send in public comments that I requested be read into the record.
Okay. Have we? Got them?
Send that to me?
Yes, and it's in the packet.
Oh, and it's in the packet?
It relates to the last meeting.
Will it be easier for you just to read it?
Again, if you don't want to.
Um, for your next.
To the planning commission and zoning administrator, I was not present at your February twelve, twenty-five meeting, but I listened online and hear with rebut comments made about me by Kenneth Spicer. On February four, I did call supervisor Spicer in an attempt to reduce rela- relational friction and encourage reappointments of the boards to the planning commission. I argued that the likelihood of pre-meeting argument between two friends is just as likely as agreement between a married couple. On February twelve during your meeting, Ken correctly stated that our call lasted approximately one hour, during which he frequently spoke over me to express his opposing viewpoint. He correctly stated that I suggested he be more helpful than critical to the planning commission. I did not, however, suggest that he circumvent the planning commission yet again by submitting his own unrequested documents for PC review and claim that it was at my request. I cannot imagine a scenario where I would ever give Mr. Spicer permission to speak for me, and I certainly did not do so during our phone call on February fourth. Those of you that were here know what I'm talking about. I suspect that supervisor Spicer reveal, realize he was overstepping his authority again and used my name to disguise his own personal opinions as a public service to a citizen. During our call, I specifically told him that I was not asking him to write anything for me. Those of you that do know me know that if I wanted something sent to the planning commission, I would do so myself. So respectfully submitted, just that was to rebut what was said last time.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other public comments? About the battery, any energy storage facility or? Anything else?
I have comments for tonight if anybody else has any.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I welcome Jennifer Spears since Cheryl Bull's term had expired, but she certainly deserved some professional courtesy after over three years of service. I am saddened by the resignation of the board's ex-official member, Jason Bull, but I respect his decision under current circumstances. Particularly over the past year, I noticed a pattern of supervisor Spicer undermining the planning commission rather than supporting them. That's part of what we discussed on the phone. Last July, he personally spoke out against proposed text amendments, which is his right, but then overstepped his authority as supervisor to yank it from the county consideration. Even after resubmission, it still does not come before the board to vote. He wrote his own capital improvement plan project for the fire department, even though it was unsupported by the master plan, didn't run it through planning commission. He selected an area for a new overlay district, to the best of my knowledge, without consulting the planning commission. And that's part of our packet tonight is the overlay. He dropped his own documents into your February meeting under my name, which we just discussed, and without including either Jason or Cheryl Bull. It is my understanding that he actually wrote or rewrote the agenda for tonight's meeting. It's one thing to make suggestions, but it is my view that these examples show a lack of respect for the body. We citizens are counting on each of you to apply independent thought and courage to stand up for the best interest of this community. So as you approach the important matters that are before you, I hope you will do your own research, draw your own conclusions, trust your own gut, and avoid being led astray. Thank you for your service. I know it's not easy.
Thank you. Um, last call for public comments. Communications receipt.
It'll be the resignation.
Okay.
Or just.
Um. I, I saw it online, I imagine it's in here somewhere.
It's not in the.
It's not, it's not in the, okay, so. So Jason Bull was a representative of the trustees on the board of, around the planning commission. Has resigned, I don't know why, but he's resigned. So that means the trustees are gonna have to appoint someone else. But other than that, you know, he was here for, I don't know, six months or so.
Here for a year.
Was he here for a year? Was it that long?
But you, I have it on the email, do you want me to read it real quick or?
Sure.
To the clerk. Derek Columbia Township Board of Trustees and Planning Commission, this is my. Sorry, it's really small, but this letter serve as a formal notice of my decision to step down from the ex-official position holdover on the Columbia Township Planning Commission effective immediately. Yeah, sorry, it's getting really small. It has been a privilege and honor to serve our township in this capacity. Under the right circumstance, I would certainly consider doing so again in the future. Jason.
Okay.
And then I'll get, print the letter for the record and parents for the record. Do you want the second one that you read today in it? Or just a?
Is that an option?
Yeah, it can also be attached in the minutes.
Oh, okay.
Or, or the recording secretary would just do a summary of them. Either way.
Um, do we have to vote to accept Jason's resignation or is?
I don't think so. I mean, not, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a voting type of thing.
Okay. No public hearing, so on to new business. Um, this is for the the site plan for the cell tower that's at the transfer station?
Correct.
And they want to have extension, basically.
Correct, so according to the zoning ordinance, uh, when you get a site plan approval, it's good for twelve months. So site plans must begin, project work within twelve months, final approval of the project must be completed in twenty-four months. If the project cannot be started, then the developer can ask for a six-month extension. So we're actually, I think a monthly, and I think it was supposed to be at the last month's agenda, but if we can do the math correct, so they have requested, um, then please submit a six-month extension for the communication tower. I've attached the media minutes and we kind of have all that, so. Um, there is a representative, but if you wanna have kind of hear why the project was. Started.
Oh, sure. Who, who's the representative? Oh, that's you?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I'm Amy Rodriguez with Telecam, where I listen, representing Southern Towers. We just had run into multiple issues in the past year. Government approvals and reports took a little longer than expected, getting material, and most of the different contractors that work on the towers have been kind of overwhelmed with construction, so we have everything in order now. We plan on, as long as you got the extension, construction should start by the end of April. Um, we're ready to, as long as we get approval this evening, we're ready to apply for the remaining permits that we need.
Okay.
So we just wanted to make sure we had this approval in mind before we started those processes. And then as soon as we get those, we're ready to go.
Okay, right, so this was approved before, and I don't see any reason to not extend it, so.
Yeah, and I don't even think there were like any. We'll see if there were conditions.
Were there any changes?
Nothing has changed on the contest.
Like has been submitted, yeah, meets the, yeah, there weren't any conditions for the board or the planning commission for their approval in last February.
Okay. Well, it's just a simple extension, so. Do we need to vote?
You do need to have a vote, yes.
Um. I make the motion that we extend the the contract for the cell tower. Um, six months, is that what it is?
Correct.
Correct.
So March, April, May, June, July, August, September, so it's good through September.
Okay. So I make the motion, we extend it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank.
Thank you. Is this, do I need to go to the board for another approval or? This is, this is all I need, I just wanted to double check.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Um, they do net meet next week, so. I don't, I don't think it would need to go to the board.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, um, if you find out.
Yes, I'll let you know, yeah.
Do you have a card or anything on there or this?
Thank you.
So next is the site plan review for the the plan, what is it? PUD, was it? Pandemic dwell.
We haven't determined that yet.
Oh, you haven't determined yet, okay.
Set up over here on the light.
Sure.
Might need a little exposure. Oh. Well, we'll see when you find out there, I hope you guys can. Seen it all, well.
We all have my answers.
We have big man, so my, my client's, um, looking at buying this piece of property if he hasn't already, um, but he is looking to put a resort in with some cabins that he can rent out. Um, or, um, I guess weekend, we, we use maybe a couple of weeks. Um. This is very preliminary, so we're just kind of here to get some feedback from you guys to see if, uh, this is allowable in the R two or yeah, R two resorts own and what kind of things you might like to see, um. One of the, one of the questions that kind of came up was, um, that there was maybe some ruling that, um, each resident has to have its own parcel, which wouldn't make sense for this project for, uh, being resorts and solid one ownership.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I guess that might be the first question to answer, um, and then is this a kind of allowable type of use for this area and I guess any other input you might have, I know it's, you didn't have a plan to really look at that much, but we can have an informal discussion on it, I guess. Um, what, what we're looking at is some smaller eight-brain cabins, kind of like the picture I have here, uh, maybe a larger one down here for a bigger family and then a, um, bloodhouse kind of centered on everything where people can congregate, things like that, and I'm sure there'll be other amenities as we develop this plan, fire pits and that type of stuff, but, uh, that's just kind of our real plunder plan layout right now. Um, I will say there's, there's probably, you can see there's wetland along the side, I think that does extend up here, so this road will probably come down a little bit, but um, we're real, real early in the design, so.
Okay.
What were the rental terms? You, you said they're just cabins that would be temporary.
Correct.
What kind of time, is it up to two weeks?
Yeah, I would say typically a week to two weeks. Uh, you know, I, I suppose if somebody wanted to stay longer, they could, but I, you know, it's one of those things that if they rent them out for two or five hundred dollars a week or a day, I mean, how long are you gonna want to stay? So. Typically a, a week vacation type stuff.
So that was lake access?
It does have lake access down here.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And then we had put a little parking lot mainly for these, but if somebody has something they wanna, like a kayak that they wanna bring down, they could park here and go into the lake.
Piers and for boats, piers for boats or?
Um, at this time, I don't know, they probably will have a seasonal dock type thing that people could um, use, but that's kind of a long ways down the line.
Mm-hmm.
Will the clubhouse have a separate, uh, parking lot?
Um. It depends on how he proposes to use that. Right now, we were thinking it's probably just for residents, um, I don't think he intended to rent it out to anybody. If that's something you want us to explore, you know, if you think this might be a good location for a, you know, if somebody wants to have a, a little meeting or a uh, family get-together or something that he could rent the clubhouse out, maybe we look at putting in a parking lot.
Was there a plan for sewer and water?
Um, right now, we would assume, um, I don't think there's water sewer out in this area, correct? So we assume it's gonna be probably a community septic and a community well for, for these units. It doesn't make sense to have individual ones for each one, but we have to have a discussion with the health department to see what's, what they say.
Well. I'm, I didn't think of a whole list of questions, but I think I would probably present them in writing, I'd have to think about it.
Yeah, that's, I was wondering about that, cause it's so, so fresh, I know.
Well, I also haven't really had a chance, but if they're not gonna be individual parcels, then it will have to be a PUD because you can only have one dwelling per person. So if it's gonna be a resort type of thing, then it would have to go through the PUD process. So even though the resort says all the lovely language of exactly what you wanna do, the rest of it.
We were looking at using.
The rest of it then does not.
Doesn't.
Doesn't flow, you can still only have one dwelling per parcel. Um, if you wanted to have individual parcels, you could do a site condo, but if he wants them all open like that, then you would have, you would need to do a PUD. And I haven't read that origins at all, so, but which is a public hearing, all of that. Fun.
Cause I probably read something about a condo.
Yeah, we, that's what we were wondering, is if we were gonna have to kind of minimize or something, but if it's only gonna be one ownership, then it doesn't make sense to go through that process.
You would just do, you would just do the.
PUD would probably be the more appropriate process.
Yes. Yeah, so, yeah, if one owner owns all of the dwellings and the parcels, then you wouldn't want to do a condo. If they were gonna sell the units to different people, then they would then need to do a site condo and probably create units for each of the, each of the homes, and then the rest would be like the common or the open space. Common area is usually what they call in the site condo.
So it's, it's like nine acres? If they were gonna divide it up, how small could be?
So they could only, so per the land division act, they could only have four parcels, and we had kind of tried that to start with, cause they really wanted the dwellings more down by the lake, and they could have just put in a private road and tried to put them by the lake. Um, so to circumvent the land division, you have to then do a different type of development, which would be a site condo or a PUD.
Yeah, property's twelve, twelve acres.
What's twelve acres?
I also thought it was nine for some reason.
Well, I, I, I don't have the official, um, I guess I don't have the official, there's a lot of little scripts that go down, and so I need to verify those, like I said, we're, we're early in the process. That was the survey we received from the client.
Um, and then the proposed, like dwelling size, would it be more than the seven-twenty that the ordinance requires?
No, I think that's what we're proposing for the smaller units.
Is seven-twenty?
Seven-twenty.
Oh, okay.
Um, and, and that could change, you know, do we want two bedrooms, one bedrooms type stuff?
Gotcha, okay.
They're just A-frame, two stories, so not a second floor.
Uh, yeah, the, the second story is in the roof. So like, I think this picture, you probably can't see it, but there's a bedroom upstairs, and then like your, there might be another bedroom down below or bathroom, and then there's kitchenette and, and living room.
So the foot, the footprint is seven-twenty.
Yes. That was my understanding, but when we come back, we'll, we'll make sure we have all these answers and.
Um, so per the PUD, um, I think there's then, so there's kind of a free application uh, conference, which I guess we could call that, where basically he's presenting this project and you know, without any of us reading the PUD origins, we have no idea if it even meets the requirements. Uh, there is a preliminary, um, a preliminary one where he could put a little bit more detail on there and then come back and do a preliminary, and we would have a public hearing and basically send to the neighbors, um, cause a PUD is a public hearing. And then we can then go through the ordinance kind of a little better. And then there would then be, the final would then be all like the grading and engineering, um, all the other permits, the journey commissioner and all that stuff as the final. So, um, you know, maybe the neighbors. So, you know, maybe the neighbors have an idea that. This house on over here should be somewhere else or, you know, to kind of get some input from the neighbors. Before they do all of the engineering of the drawings, so. But that sounds like something. We would be interested in then. Just says public hearing, then it says final and then they.
That's, that's up to the developer to arrange that, the public hearing, to request it and arrange it.
Yeah, well, I'm kind of reading it through here and I guess it doesn't really say, but. I don't know why we couldn't call it a preliminary.
Well, it seems to be that property's been sold, or sold for a long time.
Yeah.
There's probably a big reason for that.
But it, it looks a little drier in the back here, so.
Back and front, middle, you gotta be built on stilts.
Yeah. Well, we'll have the wetland, people tell.
Well, yeah, I mean, and that's where probably you should go next before you can even.
Right, and he, and he started that, we already had this done in front. Because that's where he wanted to concentrate the development, but. You know, as you can see, it almost happened, it's taken up with wetland. So. But that'll be something we definitely look at for proceeding.
Because that was the word before, why it was never purchased through all the time because it was. From building?
Yeah. And that, I, I suspect a lot of it is, but we'll see.
Yeah.
We'll have to, you know, that's the other part of it too, is that there is a high water table, we have to do the soil. Examinations to see if we can even put a septic system in, so.
Correct, yeah.
It doesn't really refer to a preliminary, but that would, we could do a preliminary of.
Probably would be.
If the developer would like to, it's very common to do a preliminary to, before you do all the. Engineering and the grading, because then some of that he'll need for the eagle and the other, the trade commissioner and those, you know, types of.
Do you know anything about the height of the big one in front?
It would be the, the same. Story, I, I guess I'd call her story and a half, but it's like the same type of apron design. I, I don't have a picture of that yet, so.
Where is this proposed site at?
51st Street. Staten Lake is over here. So it's down, I don't have an address, I guess, but.
That would be Fire Lane 14.
Yeah, so you're right.
Where it curves around and you're talking about a little bit of soupy, a little bit of wet area. I've been taking care of Fire Lane 14. It's four and a half years, almost five years graded and I spent $2,000 recycled asphalt. There's a, there was a lot of houses built back there and the day you notice anything. You can walk back, I have done that, you can see old foundations. And that's why it's wet, because you got holes. Yeah, there is a, you know, it's high and low, but technically I would consider anything wetting unless. You find out. From the property authorities. But I, first, the idea is phenomenal. That's my opinion.
We don't have some time to worry.
Yeah. So I kind of reading through the site plan, so. This is the preliminary kind of per the ordinance where you don't really pay a fee and you kind of come in and you kind of look at the plan. But we certainly could do a preliminary again, when he actually applies for the PUD. Instead of submitting the full final.
Right. I think that would be better because the system, you know, like I said, I'm sure we can make some changes, significant changes made, so.
But just kind of, you know, your PUD ordinance isn't super long, so I'm just kind of reading a few of the initial things. You know, it, it kind of, it, you know, the uses that he has in there are permitted, he has more than two acres. Just kind of go through the rest of the ordinance, so. And then it talks about ownership, that one owner could own the property and then the buildings inside, so. That's. Yeah, if they don't want individual units, then the PUD would probably just be best.
So the next step is you run the zoning administrator.
Yeah, so now they'll do kind of a better, like a beefed up plan, maybe two pages, maybe three, maybe two. And then they'll have the dimensions of the property, there might even be a survey at that time, the setbacks will be on there. You know, but, you know, maybe the road dimensions. But for the most part, you can kind of see what they're proposing and then maybe they'll have some more wetland delineation. Because they want two houses down there by the lake.
We'd like more, but I just don't think we're going to get it.
Yeah.
So by then, we should, we should have developed a list of our questions, which.
Correct, yes. So basically you already have, it will basically look the same, they might add maybe one or two in there, but for the most part. So the planning development, there'll be one owner and the intent is to have homes that are 720, maybe a little larger. For short-term rentals. Which we don't regulate short-term rentals and. Even someday, they could just be regular single-family homes that could be long-term rental. I don't know if the owner would want to think. Long-term of maybe being able to do a site condo, maybe in the future or further on.
You know, you want to keep, you know, future stuff in mind, so.
Well, there could be a possibility in the future to then. Have them be single-family homes and then so.
Tasha, the public hearing, there will be a public hearing.
There will be a public hearing.
Would go to everybody.
With the 300 feet, correct? And then, yes. So there would be two public hearings, I'm thinking he wants to do a preliminary, so there'll be two. There'll be one for the preliminary and then there'll be one for the final.
This is vague, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want to take too much of your time, so. Yeah, I think we got a, a process that we can follow.
Okay.
So that was a big question to PUD and then if you had any objections or something we had to watch out for. You know, if you come up with stuff you want to let us know, Tasha, that's fine too, so.
So we should send our questions to you?
Sure, yeah.
Good, thank you.
I have a question, if I can.
You're welcome.
Sure. So I'm Jeff Postman, president of the Staten Lake Company Owners Association, and you believe that there is a, an effect funneling. That is in effect on our lakes and I just want to make sure that that is known that. You know, we, we would oppose any type of funneling of these units into the lake. So we do not want to see that there would be 14, 16 docks out into the lake. And there would be a concern as well as any water quality issues with septic.
Want, is that county ordinance or a claim?
I'm looking.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, next.
Yeah.
The, the actual funneling is on my list of concerns too and I, I know nothing about a lot of the benefits of this.
If you find out, I would, I would like to have a copy of that.
Yes, yeah, I'm looking, I guess I. I'm somehow thinking it's a standalone.
Yeah, I was just going to say it could be standalone.
But I, I think it's in here, I'll find it. I think it's just in the back, so. Do you have any like quick questions right now? Well, I'm here, I knew, oh, here's, I found the phone order here. So there is a funnel ordinance. Standalone. I don't need to make copies, so everyone has one, it's only like two pages.
And her, yeah.
If you want to.
Yeah.
The covers.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the thing, the, the quality of the lake, you know, we start trying and stuff into the lake and our lake quality right now is. It's pretty good, because Jeff knows a piece of president. Well, because we've controlled it during, throughout the years, by law. We have to do a quality test of the water, oxygen, if we do three, five years, it's pretty good. It's a big deal, Michigan, keep your water. We did that thing with the aeriator, did that, did that help? Might have, but. This took expensive, we, we just trashed it last, last year. Put the money towards, we.
Has there been any consideration of short-term rental restrictions?
We've talked about talking about it, that's about it. You see, we're tapping into their VMVs, right? I mean.
Is this? Well, this is a standalone ordinance, which means basically it's a project ordinance. Although basically, you know, we would, you know, I'll make sure that. Part of the review.
Okay, so, um, we can wrap up there, I guess, unless anybody has anything else.
Okay, so he'll work on his preliminary plan and then when I get it, then we'll schedule the public hearing for the preliminary.
Thanks for your time.
Probably a couple of months, I think.
Okay, yeah.
It won't be next month or anything.
Um, okay, next is the, the overlay for the. The Creo, the battery energy storage thing. So we've been circling on this for like a year and we've gone from having a. A zoning ordinance regulating it to now it's up to the state of Michigan. And at this point, I think it's going to be good to have a Creo. Kind of in a, in our toolbox, just to have it there in case we need it. If we can have it all written up and ready to go. And Dennis put like all of this together. And there's maps and there's, we, we're going to have a public hearing tonight on it, but everybody didn't get notified properly. So, um, I don't know, at this point, I'd just like to open it up the discussion and see if you guys have any comments on it.
Well, the few extra things in this packet, um. Kind of explains better the parcels that are in the overlay. Because the kind of those, when we had it the first time, it just kind of had this green thing on the map and.
Yeah.
Wasn't exactly clear which ones were in it, so the new information. Gets the parcels that are in the overlay and then I think it also gives the parcels that are within 300 feet.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the additional information that's in here, that wasn't in the last one.
And there have been some corrections made on it, but they're just basically. Some of the numbers were on some of the parcels.
Missed, correct?
But it looks like they've all been corrected at this point.
So it will be re-noticed and then the notices will then go to the 300. So we, I think we'll have the public hearing next month for the text and then. For the map amendment and then for the text also.
Well, there was a timeline, you saw the timeline, right?
Yes.
So I don't know if there's any more discussion to be had, because we've been talking about this for a year.
Yeah, and I, I think that the text. Is the same other than. It looks like public notice. I don't know if the text itself has been changed since the public hearing text was sent out, other than. Explaining the actual. Was the text changed from the public hearing text that was noticed? Okay, just the parcels.
Just the parcel.
Explain better which ones are in the overlay, so. That's what, that's my understanding, so.
So at this point, can we just go ahead and go, go ahead with this and?
Say, consider, so I think we're just talking about the maps, here's the map, here's the overlay district, these are the parcels that are in it. The parcels that are within 300 feet. The mailing list, consider.
Investor's property is not in this area, though, correct?
Correct.
Right. My understanding of Vesper is going ahead with their plan on, was on 50th?
Actually, the seller. The seller wasn't part of the last text amendment, so that's new in this packet. We had only had the, oh, I don't think we had the actual seller language in it, that's so. That's raised the agenda. It's in tonight's packet?
Solar's ordinance, 2025-002.
So on the agenda, number J5. Orness, point, solar purpose. One more thing here, it's kind of all too, too flexed, so overlaying, oh, here we go, page 35. All the packet pages should be numbered at the bottom. So the initial public hearing was done for the overlay and then the battery storage, not the solar.
Okay, so this was written up.
Supposed to be in there, I guess I misunderstood.
Oh, this was written up by our lawyer?
Huh?
This was written up by the lawyer, correct?
I do, a real lawyer, no.
A real lawyer? Like our, like the township's lawyer? Yes.
I thought that the battery storage one was. Generated from the attorney, but I don't know about the solar one, we didn't really talk about that one at the meeting. I think it was part of our packet with the battery, but when we talked about having the public hearing. We had just talked about the overlay and then there's the battery storage facility.
Right.
But not the solar.
Yeah.
So.
And maybe at that time, we were dreaming of not having solar.
Very well could be, so moving forward for the next meeting, if we would like this also on the agenda, then. We would need to put that on either, or as part of the public hearing.
Yes.
But I don't think. I'm reading over it. Was that, hey, did you miss that meeting?
I missed the last meeting.
Yes, the minutes were running. That's the CEO, something to board, they weren't meeting. Yeah, so the motion was for the battery storage and the overlay, but nothing about the solar. So I don't think at the last meeting, the planning commission didn't review the solar ordinance. They went over the battery storage one and then the old then the fan. That was it. I don't know that it makes a difference since we could do the other two and then review the battery storage another time, or we could review it right now and and decide. I don't know. I don't know what's too much, I guess.
We should do whatever we can to move ahead with this battery storage thing.
The battery storage one? So do that one in um, April, maybe May, talk about the solar one?
Um, I think we should do them all at once. So it can be done. Since the, the lawyer wrote this up and we're gonna be second guessing the lawyer.
Okay.
I would be willing just to kind of rubber stamp it and say it's ready to go.
Verbiage is very similar to the battery.
Read over it at the meeting if, if we want.
But it seems like this is time.
Forty six. It talks about renewable. Hopeful the safe paper and duplex things, but then I hit one on page forty six. It talks about the renewable energy ordinance in the overlay district. Kind of when we talked about creating the districts, we know that all. Well, there's two resolutions. Two ordinances. One. I think there was, sorry. Consider recommend an approval ordinance twenty five oh oh one, the overlay district. Which would include the language and the map and then twenty five oh oh two is the solar. So, yes, we certainly, yeah, if you wanna have them all. Because the solar is in the overlay district. So the solar wind, we get to the wind and then the battery storage. That proposes to be in, in this, yeah, all whatever there is in this district.
Yeah.
That sounds reasonable. We can edit all we need.
Has the developer contacted you for solar?
No. I think the solar that was up in the above them is going in Geneva. That one's not very big. It's only thirteen acres. I had heard maybe a thousand, so I don't know where that information was coming from. But there's, I think it's thirteen acres in Geneva and that's just south of baseline, pretty close to south of baseline. But no, I haven't had it.
January twenty first, the township board reviewed both the twenty twenty five oh one, the overlay, the zoning uh, map markup overlay and twenty twenty five oh two solar energy system. And the township board approved both of those and sent them on to the planning commission.
Thank you. Did you say January twenty first?
Pardon?
January twenty first?
January twenty first.
Okay. For the boards of the two or, okay. That's kind of what I thought, but I think when we got to the planning commission, we were reading them. I think we, we're just kind of more focused on the other ones and just didn't get that, but we can certainly add it and move on.
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay.
Give this our stamp of approval. Um, do we have to vote on this?
Um, yes, because we hadn't talked about the solar part or the solar yet of the draft text. Um, just kind of real quick, so there's um, an amendment to the definitions. Uh, will be a new section of fourteen, four point one four W. It'll be called solar energy systems, which is a special land use. That would be it. So we'll have, in the ordinance, we'll have an overlay district, so I'm guessing that'll get a number. I don't know what that would be. And then, yeah. So be the other. He is a victor. So it'll be fourteen, four point one four V as a victor and then it'll be W. So three point zero nine, so a new section three point zero nine will be the renewable energy district.
Okay.
So we're adding a new district and three and check section three and then two special land uses and then definitions and articles. Once it kind of all gets codified into the text, so.
So, we do have to vote on this?
You do, since, yeah, since the language hasn't been, so it could be as, you know, we reviewed the text and um, recommend is approval to the board. What was that motion of?
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that.
Approval to the township, yeah, because you're recommending approval to the board.
Correct.
Of the solar energy system ordinance.
Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the solar energy ordinance with the corrections to the map, because there are a bunch of little corrections to the map. And rest of it is, is written.
That first one was taken out from the last, okay.
I think because it ribbered there too, they.
Yeah.
They've reset it.
Yep. Yes, yes, I think that's a good motion.
Okay. I'll second it. Okay, um, I guess we'll do a roll call. Frank? Yes, yes. Dave, yes. Reservations?
Uh, yes. I'll be a yes.
That was a yes vote. Yes, you have reservations.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so we got through that. Um. Yeah. I'm gonna pass off this map with all the corrections on it because that's kind of gonna be your thing. So we've done all the work. All we need to do is a Sony administrator report.
It's in the packet on the back. One I really liked was quite.
Okay, was there anything of doubt? Any?
Oh, no, I. Just the normal, then on drawing size. Um, the holiday engineering, he's on there. We talked a few times. Big property on forty ninth. It says environmental questions, divide questions. But nothing, no.
Oh, the, the campground, you haven't heard anything official?
I told them it's not allowed.
It's never, oh, good. That's, well, that's, you know, that's good, yeah.
It's, it's not, it's not a stated use allowed in the zoning ordinance.
Right.
We have a special use, but it was never listed in any of the districts.
Okay.
Which was kind of what we were working on with our text amendment, whether to put it somewhere or not.
Okay. So does it sound like FC under battery?
Uh, I haven't heard from them.
Well, they might have just been dreaming, dreamers.
Or they, they heard you cannot do it and decided to leave it alone.
Um, so there's no Z B A. I don't think there's been a Z B A meeting.
No, there was not a meeting. I tried to keep going away too.
And since we don't have a township board member, we won't have a, a report.
Correct. Um, they can refer to the minutes on the website, I guess.
So I did watch the last, the last um, township board member meeting and it was really quite informative with the lawyer there.
So I can simplify something regarding the battery storage, I thought, with um, the workable ordinance making sense when you already had a developer approaching you, the Creo for the what if, for the possible one. And I don't know if Supervisor Ficer can or will report on his negotiations currently with Vesper. That's something this group would want to hear.
Very short meeting. This didn't last long. Uh, I don't think they were happy that Foster slips was there. And they were kind of not wanting to share more than what they had to. Uh, Lauren's gonna be at our meeting. I thought I'd let her go ahead and then explain. I do have a question.
Sure.
So you did approve the Sony map? You voted on that?
Yes.
For the.
On that last month.
So you voted on the voting map, man? Did you vote on uh, ordinance of twenty, uh, twenty twenty five oh one?
Last month.
And?
That's why we were gonna have a public hearing.
Five oh two? Were they separate motions and?
So in last meeting, yes, we did the map and the twenty five oh oh one, and then today we did the twenty five oh oh two because we didn't do it the last time.
Did you do the correction to the map for the?
Yes, Dave did that today.
So we got motion for all that taking care of that?
Yes, yep. Yeah, so, yeah, his motion was for the solar and the correction to the map today, tonight, yeah.
We have a plan for the minutes from last time?
I just need to write them.
Oh, you're doing it?
I've just, yes. I've just been super busy. That's my fault, I guess. That's my fault, yeah.
But I understand we are a small portion of your workload.
It's springtime. Everyone wants to build right now, so, yes.
But then does Jennifer do tonight's? Because now she's secretary.
Correct. Or I'm assuming that's what's happening because I wasn't taking any of that.
Well, so once again, public comments. Our, our guy from Van Duren County is here.
Did, did you miss the timeline for the hearings on that?
Um, your timeline's right here.
At least he asked if, if we saw it. And I think we all, yes. It's in the packet.
And Jennifer has it.
You, you guys talked about that in our agreement with.
Are you setting a public hearing? Is that what you're getting at?
Both the timeline of in the papers next week. And they have a hearing on their next meeting.
Yes, that will, yes, that's, that's the plan.
Okay, so who does that?
I will coordinate with the clerk to make sure that it's ready to go here.
So it's like, it is the clerk's job, right? Or not?
The zoning enabling act says the clerk, but a lot of the times the clerk doesn't do public notices for zoning. That could be a discussion to have.
So, so you will coordinate with the clerk?
I will coordinate with the clerk, yes. Or draft the notice or he can, you know.
So it's, it's covered, are you good?
Yes, and then it's gotta go like next week, like next one. Yeah, so that's why when there's public hearings at next meeting, you only have like one day. So when people say, I wanna be on the next agenda and they give it to me the day of the meeting, I have like three days to make sure it's ready to do the public notice, so. That's why I tell them I need it before.
So you put it in the Salve interview and do you bother with the reminder?
I don't know what the, I personally have not sent it to the reminder, but the clerk may put it in both either.
Can we get it put in the reminder? Do we have to make a, have a vote on that or?
You have a publishing budget, I think, so.
Yeah.
Reminder and the tribute.
The tribute and the reminder, yeah.
Yeah, the stopping favor has got to be all the formal, but then the, the reminder, it can be, it doesn't have to be as formal, so you can put less words and.
Last I had in the reminder, refer them to our township website for the information.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, anything else? Anything else we've missed? So if, if nobody else has a public comment, we're gonna wrap this up. Great, eight oh five, we're done. Oh, we have to do a motion and.
I like, I like it. I'm up to a turn eight oh five.